Good evening. Today is Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I believe in the Constitution of the United States of America and the future republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Pratt.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW Director.
Here.
Finance Director.
Here.
Community Development Director.
Here.
Police Chief.
Here.
Fire Chief.
Here.
City Engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. Anybody? Okay, consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, expenses, consideration of ordinance 24-04, amending Chapter 275 Neighborhood Restoration and Beautification Commission, second reading notification regarding next study session authorizing a Metro Act Right-of-Way Permit Extension for AT&amp;T, consideration of 2024 Tight Lines for Troops Charity Veterans Event. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now, we will have an accreditation presentation from Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police.
Oh, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. It is certainly my pleasure. My name is Ron Wiles. I'm the Deputy Director with the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police and the Accreditation Program Director. Spent my law enforcement career in Grand Bling Township down in Genesee County. Served 26 years there, and for the last two years, I've served with the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police. We are here today to honor your police department. They have just achieved a significant professional accomplishment, something that the vast majority of police agencies across the state of Michigan have not yet accomplished. For an agency the size of Manistee Police Department to accomplish this is significant. You're all somewhat probably familiar with accreditation. Your kids go to accredited schools. You get sick, you go to an accredited hospital. Law enforcement accreditation is very similar. It's a progressive, time-proven way to increase performance and service, not only within the agency, but outside with the residents of the City of Manistee as well. Part of my role here as the Deputy Director is I get to tour the state of Michigan, and I talk to a lot of police chiefs, I see a lot of departments, and all police departments are not created the same. You had a very good department prior to accreditation, but you don't have to be sick to get better, and that's what accreditation just did for your police department. We took a good department, now you made it excellent, following professional standards of our industry. In Michigan, there are approximately 600 police agencies. There's around 400 municipal police agencies, 83 county sheriffs from across the state, and the rest are hospitals, colleges, universities, those types of places. Your agency, the Manistee Police Department, was the 67th agency in the state of Michigan to achieve state accreditation. Like I said, that is a significant professional accomplishment for an agency authorized for 13 sworn personnel. So, well done, Chief Accreditation Manager, for this accomplishment. Let me tell you a little bit about the process, what it took to achieve this. So, first of all, and for whatever reason, this is the most difficult step in the whole process for some chiefs, the decision to apply, the decision to get started. A lot of chiefs talk about getting better, a lot of chiefs want to get better, but not a lot of chiefs right now are or have yet been willing to take that step, rip the Band-Aid off and say, "You know what? Accreditation's going to make us better, and we're going to do it." Not only are we going to do it, we're going to do it voluntarily. No one told them they had to do this. They did it for the sole reason of better serving their officers, better serving the residents of the City of Manistee. The second step in the process is where all the work is done. We call it self-analysis. We give an agency two years to go through their current written directives and compare them to 128 professional standards, law enforcement standards. I can guarantee you, some of the things, when they first looked and they started to compare those things, they were right on the money, they were doing very good. But I can also guarantee you, there were several things that they weren't doing. There was room for some growth or improvement there, and that's what accreditation is all about, making good better. But not only are they comparing them and changing current written directives to comply with standards, it's one thing to say it, but now you have to show it in accreditation. So, they had to pull proofs. So, I mentioned 128 standards, but all those standards have bullet points as well. So, if you add up all those bullet points, there's over 600 tasks that the accreditation manager is responsible for, to proving to a team of assessors. And that leads us to our third step, the assessment, the onsite assessment. When the department thinks they're in compliance with all the standards, they contact me, and I set up a team of assessors from outside the area. They come to the City of Manistee, they take a tour of the police department, they talk to a lot of people, they may have talked to some of you when they were on scene here, and they do a lot of file review. They compare the written directives of the agency to the standards and make sure they're in compliance. They check all the proofs. And at the end of that time, usually a two-day period, they sit down with the chief and the accreditation manager, and they go over it. They tell them what they did well, and in this case, they did a lot of good stuff. So much good stuff that the assessors granted them permission to go in front of the hearing, which takes us to our fourth step, the commission hearing. The chief, the accreditation team, sat down in front of three commissioners, and they talked about accreditation. They asked a lot of questions about the process, about their department, about the standards, and at the end of that hearing, the commission agreed that the City of Manistee should become accredited. Now, that sounds like a lot of work all by itself right there. So, they made a promise. They made a promise to the department, they made a promise to you, the elected officials, and they made a promise to the residents. The last step in this process is they're going to keep that promise, and that's re-accreditation. So, in three years, I'm going to send another team of assessors back to the City of Manistee Police Department, and they're going to do the whole thing all over again. They're going to check three years of standards, three years of proofs, talk to more people, interview more people, talk to more residents, all to make sure that they are still in compliance. So, all that to say, I couldn't be more proud of the City of Manistee, the work that Chief Glass and his team has done. It is phenomenal, the work. We don't give these awards out, they are earned. Like I said, currently, there are 77 agencies in the state of Michigan. Yours was the 67th to achieve this. So, it's a, like I said, significant professional accomplishment, could not be more proud of the work that's done. And with that, I'd like to introduce our current President of the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police, Chief Kyle Knight, for the presentation.
Good evening. I'm Kyle Knight. I'm the chief up in Harbor Springs and also the President of the MACP. Before I get the honor of giving Chief Glass this, I just have a couple of things. I think that Chief Glass sent the accreditation manager Kirsten to Mexico, because normally I try to recruit her to come to Harbor Springs with like a signing bonus or something like that, because accreditation managers work credit as well through a different organization, but they're crucial, and so she, Kirsten, Kirsten has done a lot of work. And then, the other thing, I want to just give kudos to Chief Glass. You judge the character of a person by when people aren't looking. When he's in town, I'm sure that all of you see a stellar Josh Glass, and I have the privilege and the honor, you guys are insured through the same insurance care company, MML, as we are. He attends the conferences, our Leeds Law Enforcement Action Forum Conference over in Grayling, one's coming up next week and one's coming to fall. Josh represents your city so well there, he takes it serious, he brings a lot of stuff to the table, we have great dialogue, there's approximately 40 chiefs there, and we all discussed some of the issues going on throughout the state, and when Josh isn't in Manistee, he's, when he's at that conference, he's representing you very well. And there's a lot to be said for that, because some chiefs will go there in a sort of a summer camp or a fall camp. Josh goes there to gain knowledge and to work, so kudos to Josh for that. So, now, I'm going to, Josh, could you come on up?
To all who see the certificate, know that the Manistee City Police Department, having voluntarily complied with the standards established by the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission deemed essential for the delivery of professional police services and the protection of the community, is hereby awarded Certificate of Accreditation effective this first day of March in the year 2024 for the term of three years. And this, the key word here is voluntary, and that's what their department did, is voluntarily accomplished this nice job. Good job.
He's a great man. He runs a really good department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to say a few words if I can, I don't know if I can follow that, but this is a vision that we had three years ago when Thad Taylor hired me as a police chief, and the number one thing I said to him was, "This is what I want to do." Back when Chief Bachman was Public Safety Director, we were knocking it around, this was on the horizon, and the dispute was, can we, can we accomplish this with the size department that we have? And so, we assembled a team, and we sat the team down, and we said, "Can we do this?" And they said yes. And our accreditation team is Detective Sergeant Kirsten Goodspeed, then Sergeant Schmeling, Sergeant Doug Van Sickle, and Chris Van Colve, who's here tonight. Sergeant Van Sickle's sick and Kirsten's on vacation. But they said, "We can do this." And I give them a lot of credit, this doesn't happen without them, all the credit should go to them. There were times that our department, like a lot of departments, struggled with staffing and how do we cover calls for service, and they never used that as excuse, and they kept pushing forward. And this does not happen unless they're, they buy in, because of them. So, I want to publicly acknowledge their efforts, and we're probably going to have a ceremony, internal ceremony somewhere down the line, but again, a great job by the accreditation team, because it's a lot of work.
Thank you.
The one thing I forgot to mention, kudos to you for accepting and allowing them the funds and the ability to do this.
Thank you. Consideration.
You're just an exit train. They're all bailing on you.
Consideration of the Local Revenue Sharing Board grant applications. The Local Revenue Sharing Board distributes 2% of money from the Little River Casino. The deadline for the 2024 cycle, one, applications is Friday, March 8th, 2024, 5:00 p.m. City staff has prepared three grant applications for submission to the Local Revenue Sharing Board. This agenda item will include three separate motions, one for each grant application. At this time, council could take action to authorize the submission of a grant application to the Local Revenue Sharing Board for the Fire Department in the amount of 2,604 for kitty fire extinguishers for home distribution through various public education events. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I guess I just had a question. What is your vision, like, for distributing them? Like?
Sure.
Thought on that?
Yeah, so, got this, it's not really a PowerPoint, but I just, so, second slide.
Second slide?
Yep. So, so really, with the vision for distributing the fire extinguishers is, last grant cycle, what we did is, we got a digital fire extinguisher trainer, and what we did is, it's, it's, it's a digital trainer that we can run people, multiple people through, and teach them exactly how to use the fire extinguisher. One of the things that I discovered is that you get a lot of questions about, "Oh, my fire extinguisher is very old," or, you know, "How long do they last?" and those types of things. So, the idea of writing behind this grant is, I wanted to get a supply of fire extinguishers so when we do these presentations and when we do our digital trainings, when these questions do come up, we give them an opportunity to hand out a fire extinguisher. I did it in the spirit of summer prayer, I came up with the budget numbers, so we have the goal of handing away one fire extinguisher per day of summer and that, so you, you'll probably see us doing that at public safety events throughout the summer.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Should I be voting on this, being I'm on the Revenue Sharing Board?
And I think you represent the city on that. I'll defer to the attorney, but I think if you support the application to the board, I think that's, you're on the board because you represent Manistee, I would think it's okay.
You're an ex officio on the, on the board?
I am.
Are you the ex officio on the?
I'm one of the three members, from the city, the colony, and...
Okay. Yeah, I do believe you can vote on that, yeah.
You always voted, right?
Yeah.
Would you please take role, Heather? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. At this time, council could take action to authorize a submission of a grant application to the Local Revenue Sharing Board for the Fire Department in the amount of 8,689.99 for exercise equipment updates. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. At this time, council could take action to authorize a submission of a grant application to the Local Revenue Sharing Board for the Fire Department in the amount of 8,689.99 for exercise equipment updates. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of agreement to participate in the Manistee County Household Hazardous Waste Program. The City of Manistee has participated in the Manistee County Household Hazardous Waste Program for many years. The program provides residents an avenue to safely dispose of hazardous material. This event is typically held at the County Road Commission on the third Saturday of August. This year is scheduled for Saturday, August 17th, 2024. The request includes a 250360 contribution from the city base, city based on the city population. The committee has set the rates for each participating community at 40 cents per capita. At this time, council could take action to approve the contract with the Manistee, Mason, Lake, and Oceana Conservation Districts and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Any discussion? Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Considerations of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Board of Review, Compensation Commission, Harbor Commission, Historic District Commission, Parks Commission, PEGS Commission, and Tree Commission. Mayoral and council appointments require motion second and council-voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives the majority support. The following applications have been received. The Historic District Commission, two vacancies, one term ending 2/28/25 and one term ending 2/28/27. Purpose, Historic Preservation. Council appointment, is there a nomination?
I'll nominate Cheryl Stevenson for the vacancy ending 2/28/27.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Nomination approved.
Thank you. Parks Commission, one vacancy term ending 6/30/2025. Purpose, Advisory of Parks Development, Maintenance, Improvements, and Identifying, Planning, Implementing Public and Private Beautification Projects. Mayoral appointment, there are two nominees, Linda Gamash-Chick, 345 Fourth Avenue, Shawn Wozenski, 306 Sibbene Street. I would like to nominate Shawn Wozenski for the term ending 6/30/2025.
I'll make a motion, we support the mayor's appointment of Shawn Wozenski, 306 Sibbene Street, to the Parks Commission?
Heather, would you please?
I need a second.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Tree Commission, three vacancy terms ending 12/23/26. Purpose, Overseas Public Boulevards Tree Program. Mayoral appointment, there is one nomination, Sarah Stevenson, 510 Second Street. I would like to nominate her for the term ending 12/31/2025. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now, we will have a report from the Manistee Recreation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me here tonight.
My name's Eric Thummel, and I know most of you probably outside from the MRA, but just to recap what the MRA does, just really quickly, I'm the fourth MRA Director in the past four years. I'm hoping to stick around for a while now. I'm really enjoying my...
Press the down to go through your, to advance.
Got you right there. All right. So, I've been enjoying my time with the MRA. It's a busy time, we've got a lot of things going on. It's started swim lessons tonight, as one of your council members can tell you, and we've got soccer coming up and basketball's finishing. Lots of things are happening with the MRA. We've added a few programs this past year, you can see some of the programs we've got on our plate. A couple I want to point out, youth softball came back for the first time in years, we're trying to build up a program, and we had a disc golf clinic just outside of town at the, I'm forgetting the name of the, the orchard that's out there, they've, a disc golf course outside of town, a real big one, and adult kickball was one of the fun activities that we added this year. We had a request from some of the townships to add some more activities for the adults in the population, so adult kickball was a nice addition to our programs this past year. Of course, you know, we're a nonprofit, we rely on involvement from all across the county and the community to get things done. Akron Hills Disc Golf Center is the one that we use this year. Lots of different parts of the community help out the MRA. We've got participation from 11 different townships, we had kids participating, and as well as the City of Manistee, and we have no facilities, so we're relying on area school districts, the City of Manistee Parks Department, and all sorts of different areas to have our activities take place. We're also reliant on our over 100 volunteers that have volunteered to coach, to participate. I know some of you here tonight have been coaches and participants in the past, helping our programs go forward. And every year, we give an award to a particular volunteer that gets nominated to help out. This year, Dana Dobus, who has led swim lessons for years, was our Charles E. Shadle Award winner. Charles E. Shadle was a former MRA Director. And then, Northlake Mechanical from Bear Lake, John and Ashley Sipson, a relatively new business in the community, but they've been volunteering tremendously over the past few years and really been involved in helping the MRA go forward. As they say, we're a nonprofit, we're reliant on sponsors throughout the community to help fund our activities, and we're also reliant on local municipalities in the terms of appropriate, in terms of appropriations. You can see some of the communities that helped donate or gave appropriations in the past year so that our activities could continue. All the members of those townships and municipalities, the children receive an entry rate through the MRA sporting activities at a lowered cost because of the appropriations that you've been willing to donate, and we're appreciative of that. Last year, we had over 624 kids participating in events, and that accounted for over 1,100 registrations, and that doesn't account the adults that participated in kickball or in the Zombie 5K run that we had as well in the fall. And appropriations are based on how many participants you had, and it's divided into our total budget, and we've come up with a formula that determines our request for how much appropriations we could use each year. But again, like I said, that allows students or children in our area to participate at a lowered cost. In addition, it provides scholarships to underprivileged kids that maybe couldn't afford participating. We want every kid to be able to afford participation in the MRA, and that's actually one thing we've been doing this year, is trying to promote that a little bit more. We've had a lot more scholarships already in 2024 scholarship requests, but we, because we want everyone to be involved. So, we're grateful for your support in the past. And looking forward, we're looking to upgrade equipment, we just got a grant from the Manistee County Community Foundation for new technology. I got to get a new laptop and get rid of the one that was 10 years old, but that's just been helpful. We're exploring new programs, more adult recreation, some more sports clinics and camps, and we're working on collaborations with other groups. Right now, the Armory Youth Project is planning a spring break program along with staircase services, and the MRA and the Rec Center over at Sands Park have all been involved as well. We're working together to come up with a slate of activities for spring break. So, those are some of the things that the MRA has been doing, we appreciate the help. And I just wanted to remind you that since you were supporters last year, the future is in your hands and the ball is in your court, and we want to thank you guys for supporting. I want you all to sign your initials on there and pass that down. That's one of the new equipment we got in the past year, and maybe the game we play Saturday, we'll be using that ball during a game. We just appreciate your support and want to thank you for that. So, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I agree with you, Eric, and you do very well. Thank you for your work.
Oh, thank you.
Very common, does the city provide to you?
We've, in the past, it's been $30,000 a year from the City of Manistee, and that again is based on, we have over 200 kids, and I think it was over 400 registration of kids that live strictly in the City of Manistee. And that number is different for the other areas, different townships are lower because of their participation numbers are lower as well.
So, I have a question. You mentioned scholarships.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I'm just wondering if a private citizen wanted to make a donation, can they do that?
Sure.
And like gear it towards opportunities for...
Yes, yes, we can earmark those specifically toward scholarships.
And do you know, is that information available on your website?
If it's not, I'll have it up tomorrow.
Okay, I, I've just had some people ask, and I just didn't know, I've directed them to you, but I just didn't know if that was doable. I figured it was, but...
It is a possibility, and we'd greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, okay.
Well, thank you for your time, and...
Thank you.
And do you know, is that information available on your website?
If it's not, I'll have it up tomorrow.
Okay. I've just had some people ask, and I just didn't know. I've directed them to you, but I just didn't know if that was doable. I figured it was, but-
It is a possibility, and we'd greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, okay.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A resolution of thanks and appreciation that we will be doing at a later date. So, now, we will have a presentation from the city attorney on Robert's Rules of Order.
Hello. Hey, my name showed up a lot smaller than I thought it would. There.
Click down.
Okay. Yeah, that's pretty good. Five minutes on Robert's Rules, and I mean it. So, I wanted to do these to, again, kind of get to know you guys. You can kind of get to know me a little better, since I'm sitting over there quiet all the time during these meetings. And Robert's Rules is something that a lot of people don't have to know much about until you get on a board or a commission, and then things start flying around, and what are these things? What is parliamentary procedure? So, I just wanted to do a very light, very brief little presentation on Robert's Rules. I'm not a parliamentarian myself, so when I get a question about Robert's Rules, I research it, just like I do any other legal question. I have provided legal opinions on Robert's Rules items before, but again, I don't have an encyclopedic knowledge, and you don't really need to in order to, in order to have a good meeting. So, a couple of things here. Who's Robert? There's Robert. He was an American soldier, engineer, and author. In 1876, he published the first edition of Robert's Rules. Now, it's not the first parliamentary procedure. That's been going back since, I believe, Rome. We started with parliamentary procedure, maybe even earlier. But he wrote the book, the first version of the book, that most of us use today in our groups. About a later slide, 85 to 95% of American organizations use Robert's Rules. So, Robert came up with the rules, and 1867, he was promoted to major, moved to San Francisco, and he and his wife were involved in a lot of organizations there. A lot of people moving into San Francisco at the time, setting up groups, and he found that these groups often had sort of conflicting ideas of how to run a meeting. And he started thinking, maybe we should have something a little more, a little more uniform. And he was basing his original version on the United States Congress. And the purposes of the rules were, one, to run an orderly meeting, but also to provide for the rights of the majority of the board that's making the decisions, and the minority, especially one that's greater than one-third, which is why we have sometimes a two-thirds vote required for things. Individual members, absentees, and then the body as a whole, because, as I think I've said before, this is your meeting here, and we're all welcome, and you have to let us in under the law, but this is your meeting, and it's the only time you get to do your work, is at your meeting. So, why do we use Robert's Rules? So, it removes the need for a specialized set of rules of procedure, so every board and commission doesn't need to sort of start from scratch. You can say, we're going to use Robert's Rules, and then most people will know how to make a motion to, a motion to approve something on the agenda, a motion to, here's my motions down here, a motion to end the debate, maybe. So, another thing is uniformity of the rules. So, different types of boards and different jurisdictions will all, can have the same rules. It can be familiar between those. And the rules are flexible enough to be generally applicable to different types of boards. Those were the reasons that Robert came up with when he wanted to develop these rules. So, as I said before, 85 to 95% of organizations use Robert's Rules. It's usually in the, in the board or commission's official sort of rules of procedure. It'll usually say, we've adopted Robert's Rules, that's what we're going to use. There's other rules out there. I sit on a planning commission that uses a different set of rules, and I don't remember what it's called, but it's a lot like Robert's Rules, I'll tell you that. They're easy to learn and understand for the most part. I have a 1990 edition of Robert's Rules that I use for reference sometimes, but I wouldn't use it for a legal opinion because it's several years old here. And in there, you'll see that there's 84 different types of motions referenced in there. You don't need to use 84 motions to hold a meeting. That's for sure. Let's see. So, the Manistee City Council has adopted Robert's Rules, but with a focus on substance over form. I have a bit of a blurb here from your CP10 or the Council Guidelines Policy, where it says that "The purpose of Robert's Rules of Order is to provide an organized and orderly procedure for addressing business before the council without elevating form over substance in the conduct of council meetings." And up above, it says that "Specific council guidelines shall take precedence over Robert's Rules of Order." So, you use Robert's Rules, but at some point in the past, the decision was made that you didn't want the rules to get in the way of getting things done and doing the, I guess, the common understanding of what you're trying to do here. Some examples of motions, because they can get a little funny sometimes, tabling. I like to talk about tabling when I talk about Robert's Rules. It's commonly, tabling is commonly used to send something to a later meeting, or sort of put it on, you know, business for a later meeting. Tabling is really supposed to just table something for the current meeting, but the distinction just isn't that great, and really, your substance over form provision would allow you to, you know, table something with the common understanding that you're tabling it to deal with at a later meeting. That's just one where I think the common use is different than the strict interpretation of Robert's Rules. Motion to end debate, I wanted to put that on here, so if somebody moves the previous question, that's a way to sort of shut down discussion on a topic, and that's one that requires a two-thirds vote, and that's because it is protecting, I guess you can't really see here, protecting the minority on the board. So, if you have two people on the board that want to talk a little more about something, you'll need two-thirds to really shut down the conversation. So, that's one of those things that's in there to protect the minority. And that's really all I had. I hope that was about five minutes. I think it was six minutes, so, thank you. If anybody had any questions, I can't say that I can answer all questions about Robert's Rules. Again, I'm not a parliamentarian, but I'm happy to take questions and get back to you on them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens and attendants to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to the court should not be publicly read.
Hi, I'm Nicole Bromley. I told you I wasn't going anywhere, and I'm still not. On Friday, I was pleasantly surprised by a phone call I received from Representative John Bumstead's office. I provided you a copy of that, because it's easy to say somebody called you, but I just wanted you to see that indeed he did call me at Friday afternoon and asked what was going on in Manistee with the bird feeder. I can't even begin to tell you how idiotic they thought this was, and what a waste of time this was. And the office asked me in which way could they be helpful. So, I asked them for guidance on what I needed to do, and I really hate embarrassing Manistee more. I'm from this town, but I think that decision was so idiotic. We know where it stemmed from. So, I'm hoping that maybe somebody will step up and make it so I don't have to go further in using the help that the senator's office has offered me. On a second note, two years ago, I was in Bill Gamble's office, and I had approached him because one of the city employees had approached me and said, see what happens when they need police help. Recently, a gentleman walked into our shop and said, Ms. Bromley, I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but the police are under no obligation to help you in any way, shape, or form. So, I decided to look it up. And guess what? It's the law. The police are under no obligation to help us in any way. I took that as a threat. I thought it was a threat two years ago, when I wanted it on the record. So, I'm on the record tonight, saying that this is the second time it's been brought to my attention by a member of the police service that warned us what was going to happen when we needed them, all over a bird feeder. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of updates. The city received is going to, is receiving a Tree City designation. So, Tree Commission worked with Jeff McCula. They submitted and received it, so we'll be hearing about that, and I think they want to do something with Arbor Day with the city, so that'll be coming up in April. Also, we're looking to have a meeting with the neighborhood over on Lincoln Street for that street project coming up. It's going to be March 18th, 6:00 P.M. here in City Hall, so I'll confirm that, and we'll post that as well. A couple other things I wanted to thank, city clerk and staff for their work on this election. It was, there's a lot of days of absentee early voting, which was a new thing, but it was a lot of grueling hours, but I think great work, and as usual, to the clerk and staff. Also, the Ad Hoc Events Committee, this year, the city has taken it in-house to run the Slave Bell Event. Julia Cook offered, she was involved a couple of years ago with the event. She offered to volunteer as chair, so she was confirmed as the Slave Bell Committee Chair this year. So, she'll be reaching out to vendors and also sponsors, so we look forward to working with her. Lastly, just, certainly not least, I want to acknowledge and thank Chief Glass and the accreditation team and the entire police department for their work on the accreditation. I know it was a lot of dedication, and appreciate that, so, thank you.
Just want to let you know, the Board of Canvassers did certify the election today. I was notified from the county, so the election was certified.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Mr. Pratt?
I just wanted to thank Chief Glass and all the officers for their hard work, and just mention that with both our fire and police, I hear nothing but positive comments from citizens, and I see you guys out and about, and it seems like you guys are always responsive and doing a wonderful job, so thank you.
Mr. Grabowski?
I want to thank everybody on that accreditation.